We're back in public session, so that's why we're on a little bit later than normal. Welcome to those of you who are joining us from home and to those of you who came out this evening. We actually have an audience member tonight, so that's good. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Is there any public participation at this time? No? Okay. Moving along to approval of minutes, August 20th, 2018, public session.
So moved.
So moved by Ms. McElhenney.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cardinal. Discussion on these?
Just Associate Chair, should be Vice Chair.
Oh, yeah.
No. Changes were already made.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, when we get into the non-public sessions, I think the numbering of them-
Cardinal took care of it.
Great, thank you.
All those in favor as amended?
Aye.
Aye. August 20th, non-public session one.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Morin. Seconded by Ms. McElhenney. Discussion.
So it's labeled as session one. This actually happened at the end of the meeting, it's session three. Just to make sure that that's all corrected, but Mrs. Gazer already said that she caught that. And at the end-
Session one is actually session three.
Mm-hmm. This is going to get confusing, but if you stick with your agenda-
It's labeled as session three, but labeled as three, but it's titled as one.
No.
But there is a three.
They just have one, not three.
Under there.
Do I press the one on?
Are these the ones I wrote?
Yes.
Okay. So, non-public session-
Oh, then maybe they were already fixed.
So the others are two and three, it's- the others are two and three, it's just this one needs to write.
I think they're already repaired, this is excellent. But the motion to adjourn happens in public, so we'll need- and that is already captured in the public version, so we'll just need to strike the motion to adjourn from the non-public session minutes.
Okay.
Already did that.
Thank you.
Anything else? All those in favor as amended?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, non-public session two from August 20th.
Which was actually non-public session one?
No, I thought she said three and one were switched.
Yes, but she's right, too.
Okay.
But it sounds like Ms. Gazer's already got it fixed.
Really, this one was actually one and three was two.
Yep.
Is this the nominations and resignations-
Yes.
-that we're talking about?
Yes.
So that you're saying is not two?
It is, it is one.
It's listed as one and we're changing it to two.
No, it's listed as two and we're changing it to one.
And we're changing it to one, yeah, that's what I meant to say, yeah.
And Patty says Associate Chair should say Vice Chair.
Right.
It should say Assistant Coach for Soccer instead of Assistants.
And Boveras is spelled.
Okay.
Okay.
Good.
I have a printed version.
The printed version's not as updated as the ones online.
Okay. You are just too efficient.
She is.
She's good.
Okay, all those in favor as amended?
Aye.
Aye. Non-public session-
Two.
Two. Do I have a motion? So moved by Ms. McElhenney, seconded by Mrs. Morin.
I'm just giddy that I don't do the minutes anymore, sorry.
Any discussion on these, other than changing the-
Did you already change the motion at the bottom? All right, good. All right.
That's good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, public session from August 27th, 2018.
Removed to approve.
Removed by Mrs. Cardinal to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. McElhenney. Discussion on these?
Great job.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion for non-public session one from August 27th. Motion?
Moved to approve.
By Mrs. Cardinal, seconded by Mrs. Morin. These need to say non-public, right?
Ah, thank you.
Yes, they do.
They say public.
Oh, they do, public session.
Yeah, I was just making sure I didn't have two copies or something.
Is this just reaffirming, we already affirmed them in pub- reaffirmed them in public?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
And non-public session two from August 27th.
There's two spelling changes on that, I'll get with you later.
On two?
On two, on non-public one.
Can we just mention them?
Okay. Terry Seal has an E on the end, and Kimbrough is O-U-G-H.
All right, non-public session two from August 27th. So moved by Mrs. Morin, seconded by Mr. Frida. Discussion.
My only question was ADS, is that the right? I have a minute, okay.
Yep, that's our, that's our financial software.
Perfect, that's the only question I had.
Did we use the term tweaked?
Is it, isn't it?
Where?
At the bottom of page one.
I can't recall.
I think adjusted might be better, or updated.
It's more professional, we may have used the word tweaked, I'm not saying we didn't, but I think it's more professional to reflect. The word adjusted, is that okay?
Yeah.
Anything else on these? All those in favor as amended?
Aye.
Aye. New business. Ms. Vaughn had asked if we could put manifest signing on the agenda.
And I included practice that had been established by Carolyn Rio back in 2010. We're starting to run into a little bit of a backlog, and I know that it's, there's only been two board members who are routinely available during the day, and wanting to be able to establish something with the board, because I don't want it to be, it's not an indictment against the two who usually can make it and sometimes can't, but it seems to be falling the bulk of the signing on these two individuals, and trying to make sure that we can get something that's going to be reflective. We ran into a situation this last time where we ran checks. We usually start the check run on Wednesday, cut on Thursday, and it was the following Thursday that we were able to release, because it took us that long to get checks, get signatures. And without manifests being signed, we can't release. I know that Callan had put into place, should we fail to have required two signatures, by the time the treasurer signs, the treasurer will sign payroll, payroll's released, and that's been our practice. Manifest will then be signed at the next board meeting. Accounts payable prepared to coincide with board meetings, and they've actually been coinciding with the check runs, and we may need to shift that so that it goes closer to board meetings. Failure to obtain two signatures at the time of meetings or on payroll checks will reside in the treasurer signing and releasing checks, and I know that that's something that Mary's not necessarily comfortable with doing without any backup, and I don't necessarily want to put her in that position either. So, looking to see what's going to be the best practice, should we try to shift things so that payroll, not payroll runs when payroll runs, but the accounts payable checks, in order to release those, you know, plan on running things on a Monday so that they can come to a board for that meeting night, or what's going to be most workable? Because I don't want it to just fall on a couple of people who are scrambling to try to get there so we can get things out on time, but having checks dated a week back before when we release them also starts to cause issues. So, wanting to just bring it for discussion.
I know what I'd like. I'd like to see it adjusted so that we can sign at meetings. At one point, we were doing that, I can't remember when it was, when I served many years ago on the Board of Selectmen, we always signed at meetings, and that was just part of, part of the evening.
What happened, yeah.
The other reason I like signing at meetings is, even when I was more available to sign during the day, of which I'm one of the people that typically isn't, if I had a question, there wasn't usually, sometimes there was nobody there to ask.
Right.
You know, you could be tied up and so could Mr. Gazer, and that's, you know, so that's part of why I like to sign them at meetings if we have a question, but what are your thoughts?
I'm not even sure when it changed, it used to be at meetings, I think it hadn't changed, maybe in the last three years-ish?
It was the practice when I came in, but certainly I'm willing to shift it, which is why I'm putting it here.
Yeah, I would be, I would be much more comfortable, I came in last week to sign them, but I didn't, I had questions and not being able to have those questions answered, I didn't want to assign my name to it, so.
No, I understand that. And not wanting to leave people in that position either, so looking to see what's going to be the most equitable solution. So, okay. So, we can work on getting it so that checks are cut if, I guess, Monday morning, so that they can go for Monday night board meetings.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Mrs. Cardinal?
I'm in favor of that near-term solution. Perhaps as a long-term solution, we could look into online, signature online, review of manifests and documentation, much like, I mean, you could pretty much get a mortgage online now with, through DocuSign and those secure sites for, you know, password-protected signature, so, I mean, just to add to the list of long-term, let's look into it, and then that way no one would, you could take our time, get the work done, and not have to elongate our meetings.
Right, the issue would be being able to ask questions.
That's what I was just going to, actually, come up with, it would still put us in some way out of the same situation though, if we did have questions, because you couldn't ask online without-
Of course you can. It would start a thread of, you would type in your question, and then it would notify the others involved, this question exists, it's waiting a response. If you've ever, I don't know if you have any experience with any of those online services.
I just didn't know if that would constitute a meeting, though. How would that affect it in that regard?
They're probably documented, yeah.
Right. Yeah, we can look into that.
Do you, do you foresee shifting this, causing any kind of internal problem, or, I mean, is this doable?
Have to ask the staff that are doing it, see if it causes any unforeseen problems, but on the face of it, it sounds like we used to do it.
I think right now, the issues that we've had have just been around infrastructure and making sure that, you know, we know that here's the day, we need to make sure everything's running, hold your breath, and then, you know, so this will give us two days that we need to get, but that's, we should be getting to the point very quickly where it's not about, you know, termites holding hands to hold the system together, so we're pretty close to that.
Okay. Okay, financials.
That's your cue. So, attached in your packet is the Farmington School District year-to-date expenditure report for grants and special revenue funds, and-
Should be under it, not mine. There you go.
And Farmington School District year-to-date expenditure report.
Anything that you want to highlight, or, is there anything you want to highlight?
First, I apologize for not getting into the financials folder, they were in your folder, but they, if you clicked on the financials folder, it was empty, they just were a little bit further down. I think for, for the most part, we should be in fairly good shape, we're looking to do the encumbrances for payroll benefits, those types of things, probably in the next two weeks, once things are as solid as we can assure them to be before we cut everything over. We still have a few shifting schedules that are resulting in adjusting of contracts right now, so I don't want to get things completely encumbered and then have to shift again. And at that point, it should give us a pretty good take on exactly where we are, although I, you know, we seem to be in, in solid shape here. So that you, you know, just to remind you of the shift, we are looking, we're still doing our internal transfers as far as line item transfers, but we are allowing a line to reflect the over expenditure, if it's been over expended, so that we can quickly highlight where things have been under budgeted and not, so that's going to be a change, but we are still doing the internal budget line transfer sheets, so that we've recorded where it's coming from in order to cover that overage, so that we're not going to be merrily spending from both directions, because that's-
Can we get a memo of where those, sorry, where those-
That's my question.
Sure.
Or is there any way to reflect it on the spreadsheet, this spreadsheet at all? Probably not on this formatting, but-
If, if we go in and make the changes, the software is kind of an either-or, so we're still keeping the, the internal where it's coming from, but if we go in and do it, it doesn't allow us to show it and not show it at the same time.
Okay.
But we can certainly give you a, a listing of, here's where those changes have come. Some weeks, there are several, and some weeks, there are a few, and it will make a fairly hefty addition to your packet, but we can certainly do that.
Okay.
I, I would be okay with just a memo of, this was transferred to here and this is the amount.
Okay, you're not looking for the, all the documentation, you just-
No, no.
Okay. That will probably require a little bit more to create that digest version, but we can get there.
Okay.
Okay.
Whichever way is easier for you, and I wasn't trying to create something new.
Nope, I wasn't taking it as that, it's just-
Okay.
Any questions from the board?
And I can say yes, because Mark's going to get to do it anyway.
I don't want to make any assumptions of my understanding of some of these lines, so could I ask, just to tell you what I think it is, and you can tell me if it's right or wrong, is that okay? On page 31-
Can I peek with you?
You're under the top.
Okay, oh, you found yours, okay.
Which one are you looking at?
Page 31.
Year-to-date expenditure report. Page 31, line 801, repairs bus number two, 2019, that means that's our brand-new bus, right?
Yes.
And so we've encumbered $1,288 for things like oil changes, other preventative maintenance?
Nope. When the bus arrived, it did not come with door locks.
Oh.
And it hadn't been ordered with door locks, not sure why.
Okay.
But given some issues that we've had in district, I suggest that that needs to be done, and in order to have that fitted, because it's not just a matter of locking it, there has to be a mechanism that's tied into the emergency system, so that the minute the bus is turned on, the locks release, so that nobody can get locked in if the bus is running.
Okay.
So, that's why.
So when we go to order another bus in the future, let's say two, three years from now-
That will be standard.
How, because I would think that what we could do is pull up the last time we purchased the bus and look at the spec sheet.
There's a big note on it.
Great.
Get locks. Yes.
Beautiful, thank you.
And that, that will also be done for the second bus that's arriving next month as well.
Okay, so we should see an encumbrance repair on that, too?
Yes.
And you saw, because it's not budgeted, it shows up, it's a negative number.
Exactly, a flat, like this, what you're hoping will happen with these reports going forward, work.
It's a reminder to put that into our budget development.
Great. Does that work?
It did work. What else?
Any other questions?
When we, I just answered it myself in my own head. Maybe just to point out, this is our second time seeing the new school year, the 2018-19 school year's year-to-date expenditure report, so when you're looking at the bottom lines, one would see, it jumps out at you that there's a $22,000 reduction in the amendments column.
Yes.
Just wanted to circle back to remind folks that that's based on the language that we had in our Warren article for purchasing our new buses, we had said we would save $22,000 in maintenance work.
It was the buses and the van.
So that's why you see that going down. Oh, yes, one bus and one van, right?
It was two buses and one van, so it was $17,000 on the buses and $5,000 on the van, so that was reduced because of the way that that was written.
That's okay.
Anyone else?
I just have a question. Where do we stand in regards to grants since last month? Have we received anything new or any new reports, anything in that regard?
We just received word on the second year of the robotics grant. We are going back to check to see where we are for the elementary grant on that piece, we've received the middle school and high school. I need to clarify a couple pieces with the DOE on the elementary piece, and so that won't be in here. We also just received approval on a couple of the entitlement grants that have been Title II-A has finally been approved, still waiting to hear back on Title VI.
So Title II has been approved, you said?
II-A was approved for the activities that have been put in so far, it's, it's not fully reserved yet, we're still looking at what our needs are going to be across for the, for the year. We're in year two of the student assistance grant?
Yep, and we managed to roll over some money from the previous year, do some, some work over the summer, and then also for a workshop that we hope to do around January
And there are a couple of other grants coming down the road that I'm hoping to apply for. We've received word on the Title IV-A grants that went live today. We have a fairly extensive evaluation that we need to go through as a district. We've, I've started part of that, I'll be looking at that with the admin team this week, to see what we can write. We wrote for part of that last year, and we did the smaller piece of the grant, because we looked at what we thought we could get done quickly. I'm going to be looking at asking for a larger chunk this year, and in order to do that, we need to go through the formal evaluation, self-evaluation program process first.
Anything else, all set folks? Okay, proposed budget workshop on October 29th.
Last year, we did a budget workshop prior to the formal budget season, where the board met with department chair, administration, to talk about what some of the goals were, what we were hoping to outline, get some questions on the table, and the feedback that I got from all parties was that it was very valuable. I'd like to suggest the same again this year. Last year, we did it as the last Monday in October, suggesting that we plant that at the same time this year, if that, but it wasn't on the budget calendar that I gave you, so I wanted to make sure that we got the date reserved.
Yeah, that works for me.
Same.
Okay.
This is the one that we did, I think, in the multipurpose room.
At Heinecker Plaza, yeah. And we could do likewise again, it was a, a good big space where we could kind of spread out and, and look at pieces, so.
Sounds good.
Yep. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, our first reports of the year.
And you're first.
Yes.
We haven't had you at an official meeting yet, but usually you'd go up to the, to the podium, and Ms. Vaughn will do a formal introduction to those folks that are watching from home.
So I am very pleased to introduce, very pleased to introduce Mrs. Barbara Gardner. It is her. She comes to us from the Manchester School District, she is our new Farmington High School principal, and we are thrilled to have her here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, we started off our school year with a staff retreat, I just have a couple of pictures going around, they kind of tell, I thought, an interesting story for you, kind of leaves you hanging. We had some watermelon races in the lake, we did some badminton, some yard jenga, we did a trust walk, which is why they're, they're blindfolded in that picture. We spent the day at Camp Bernadette, lot of team-building activities and lots of food. It was a beautiful day, nice and warm, and I think that really set the tone for going forward for our school year. And in the high school this year, so we have around 270 students this year, our freshman class is actually the largest class, they're at 79 students, then our junior class comes in at 72, our sophomore class is 62, and our smallest class is our senior class this year at 57. We opened the school year with our new student support center in place, the students are referred by the core team, we sat down before the beginning of school opened, we identified 13 students that we had from last year, and they were kind of, you know, our trial for going into the student support center. We have plans in place for each of those students, how their days will look, and each student has a different plan in place, so some students don't utilize the room all day long, they might, we do a check-in with them, we go to their classes, we make sure that they're getting their homework done, they're getting their assignments done. Moving to an 85-minute block is kind of longer for our students, and we've had to kind of adjust their, they're getting into the swing of things now that we're into week three, but we have certain students that will take a break in between those blocks, they come down and they check in, so it's actually going really, really well, kind of better than anticipated for the first three weeks of school, so we're very happy about that. I've had the opportunity to visit almost every single classroom on a daily basis, and I've even gotten to partake in some student activities, I got to fly kites last Friday with the math team, I did some marketing activities in our economics class, so the students are getting to know me and I'm participating with them, I'm out in the halls all the time, and I'm actually starting to learn a lot of their names, so it's been really nice. I get, "Good morning, Ms. Gardner" now, and, you know, some students come up to me and they have a special handshake, and they get all excited when I enter their, into their classroom, so I'm taking that as a really good sign, and I'm very excited, we have great teachers and students in this building. This is just such a pleasure for me to be here, I cannot tell you how I look forward to coming in here every single day and working with our students. During our really hot days, Mrs. Vaughn was very nice to have water stations set up in the school, and I contacted TD Bank, and they donated water bottles for our students. So we have a new initiative this year that I put into place and I started, where, you know the Dunkin' Donuts cups and the Honeydew cup that you have there, so those are no longer welcome in our school.
No, no.
Yes, so-
Good thing we're after session.
Yes. Now, that smart water bottle with the sports top, that's okay, but we know more of the water bottles that, um, screw the woods. And part of that, too, was you, they drop, they make a big mess, they're left all over the place, so then our custodians have to go and clean up after our students. So on the very first day of school, my big initiative was that you can bring drinks in, but they're going to be in a water bottle, and as we know, you know, not every student had a water bottle, so TD Bank came in big time and gave us three huge bags of water bottles for the students, so we kind of do look like a TD Bank station over here when you're walking through my halls, but, and they even have more to deliver, and they actually have some school supplies and stuff, so it was a nice partnership that I made with them, and the kids love the water bottles, and that has actually been a real easy change that the kids made, and we haven't had any issues going forward, so we'll see how it goes as we move on. And like I said before, we're still in the process of adjusting to block scheduling, you know, the students- The students, one student told me today that he was very surprised when he looked at his watch, it was only five minutes left. So he says, "I think this is growing on me." It is kind of hard to adjust from a 45-minute class to an 85-minute class. We did build a break in between for our students. They seem to be adjusting well. I haven't had too many complaints yet. I think the complaints come from the seniors, which we'll address later, because they have lost a few things this year in that. So I've been trying to kind of listen to them and take their advice and we will be having a senior, I call it the senior center, but I have to stop doing that because it sounds like it's for elderly people. But they're going to get their own little lounge on the second floor. Yes, so that kind of makes up for losing their senior release and their lockers, because now the senior lockers are the freshman lockers on the first floor and they're all together. So we had to do something nice for them. They'll be getting their own little section upstairs. We're gearing up for open house and looking forward. Hopefully, I get a lot of parents to come in. I'd love to meet everybody and we're getting ready for visits from Polly Bath also, so I'm very excited about that.
And I hear that Mrs. Gardner sings a mean solo with the freshmen.
Yes, yes.
Freshman orientation.
And I will tell you how that happened. So I redid freshman orientation this year. I looked at years past and I decided that I wanted to do all team building activities with our freshmen because that is a very important first day and it would make a lot of connections. I did allow the students to pick a teacher if they wanted to bring a teacher into their team. Well, one team chose the principal and it was brought to light that we had to either do a cheer or a rap to, we had three words. It was respect, responsibility, and kindness, and you had to choose one. I had a group. You would not know that I had a group, but we were going to do a song for respect. But when I got up to do my part, instead of being part of it, they were rolling behind me on the floor. So yes, it came out as a solo and I'm looking around and they're rolling around on the floor in hysterics, but apparently everybody liked my little version of it.
I hear it was quite the tribute to Aretha Franklin.
Yes, it was. As I'm belting out. But I think it was a great day because the students, they got to mingle with every teacher. We did an obstacle course, they had the rap. They just had a lot of fun things. So instead of spending that first day just kind of reviewing the handbook, going, you know, they still got to do their lockers and their schedules and meet with their advisor, but they had every teacher. We ate lunch with them, we did activities with them, and I think that really set the stage for them. And it was a nice induction for me, so I got to, you know, one-on-one with the freshmen.
That's awesome.
Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions?
Or is it for me?
Yes, just for anyone that's watching at home or later online. Open house is?
September 13th.
Great, that's Thursday, right?
Yes, and it starts at 6 o'clock.
6:00 PM. And then you said someone is coming?
Polly, yes.
Polly Bath?
Polly Bath. So we're concentrating this year too on, you know, classmate management and Polly Bath, if you guys would like to go on YouTube, she has great videos. She has actually become a hero now, but it's really good for teachers. So there's going to be some classrooms that have been identified. She's going to go in and have a visit and she's doing this district-wide and I think this is going to be great. We're focusing some PD this year around classroom management. I'm also focusing our PD on formative and summative assessments, kind of moving forward a little bit with the competency-based education. So we have a really busy year this year. So it's really nice to have support come in and just help us with that.
For open house, will parents be following student schedules or are you shifting that structure?
So for open house, yes, they're going, we did it into the block schedule and from 6:00 to 6:30 is kind of, you can come in, meet the principal, take a tour of the school and then from there, they're going to go to Block A, B, C, and D.
Did you have a question?
I do, actually. Well, you answered one of them, it was for the open house. But the other question I just had, and it may not be for you specifically, but I just kind of wanted to throw it out there. The website on the SAU account, if you were to go, say, to the high school and then pull up the Farmington High School calendar, there is nothing on it.
So, yes, so our website is actually, I had talked to Mr. Shagnan. He's going to take that over.
Mr. Brian Shagnan.
Yes. With the team of his students.
Great.
Because as I was looking at the website, I had a lot of changes that I wanted to make, even as far as the faculty page and everything. So we actually just had this discussion last week. I did not have the rights to go in and change things, so I sent it back to him. But we're kind of hoping to have a whole different website that is going to be more user-friendly, a lot more information on it.
And before we go too far down that road, we're also looking to migrate our platform as well, so that we'll be using something that is ADA compliant. So we're in the process of getting those contracts together and that should be probably within the week or so to start moving some of those pieces.
Great, contracts.
But we're looking, it's a service for the platform. We're still going to be doing the design content piece, but it's School Messenger that does our pieces going out. We're going to be able to work with them on the same, on their platform for, under our bid process price and be fully ADA compliant. Okay, so.
Thank you for visiting classrooms. I think that's probably the most important thing a principal can do on a daily basis, if you can, and some days it's hard, but if it's at least regular, that's very appreciated.
I agree with that.
I'm sure the staff and the students appreciate that as well. Can I, I don't have any specific questions from Ms. Gardner. Is anybody else?
No.
You can.
Thank you.
Thank you. But I do have a question about Polly Bath, since this sounds like it's more district-wide.
Thank you.
How does that link up with, coincide with Marcel Lebrun?
Okay.
What's, I'm curious as to what the commonalities are, what the differences are, and how that complements one another.
There's a lot of complement there. What Marcel Lebrun has done with Henry Wilson and PBIS is to help get a structure in place so that everyone is speaking the same language and is doing, you know, those pieces. What we're bringing Polly Bath in to do across district is to help target some areas where there've been some challenges, that we need some more tools in order to help teachers help students be successful. And so it's really the professional development for the teachers in that area to strengthen what they may know from PBIS, but here's putting it into practice. And it's not necessarily tied to PBIS, but there's nothing that I've seen in what Polly Bath does that contradicts PBIS.
What is her, what's her background, if you don't?
Her background is.
So she's, was a classroom teacher, I think 20-plus years, and then got into working on kind of professional development with teachers. And so she has just a really kind of practical approach to how do you manage a kid that does this in your classroom? Whether it's, you know, swearing, whether it's work non-compliance. You've got a kid that you want to come in for lunch recess and do a certain amount of work. When can you tell the kid to leave? You know, and that's, you know, kind of really just really practical approaches. She's also really, I feel, really teacher-sensitive as well. I mean, part of what she talked to us about, we were talking about kind of the population of kids that we work with, and she's like, well, she did, she said, you know, there also needs to be, we've talked about trauma-informed instruction, we've talked about, you know, kids that are going through some really difficult times. She says, "Well, what about talking about your teachers too? I mean, because your teachers work with a really challenging population of students and teachers that give their heart and soul towards doing work like this also need to have an opportunity to kind of, you know, have discussions that, you know, kind of relieve that level of stress." So she's been in the classrooms up at Valley View already. She's been in to meet with teachers. She's really impressed with people that are there and what she saw and that, you know, she feels like, you know, everybody's heart is really in the right place and it's just a matter of, you know, kind of perfecting those really kind of nuts and bolts pieces about, you know, managing a kid that's having a behavior disruption. Or maybe an entire class, if you recognize as a teacher who might be fairly new, that, you know, classroom management is not something I'm that strong in. And so that's where we're looking to use her.
Is she from our state?
She, trying to remember. She goes all over, but I feel like she operates originally out of New Hampshire.
How do we find her?
You can actually go right on YouTube and you will.
Yeah, but how do we find her?
Several of our administrators have been, have been following her YouTube channel and looking at, getting ideas and kind of saying, "Is there any way we could get her here?" And we were able to do that.
And she does do a lot of professional development at different conferences, so that's also a place where we've heard her.
How many consultants do we have?
Coming in right now.
Coming in right now. Or slated to come in? And are they all grant-funded?
I would say, yes, they're all grant-funded.
They're all grant-funded, yeah. Polly, we have Polly Bath. I'm looking to get Lynn Lyons in, in January for dealing with anxiety. So there's two, those are the two I know of.
Marcel has been working with PBIS at Henry Wilson and I'm not sure if he'll, he won't be back on the same level of support next, this year, but he may be back in a couple of times.
Who's the other lady that consults down there?
Andrea Reed, who is not coming back this year, I believe. Simply because that grant ran out.
And then Constellation's Behavioral Services provide BCBA services and that's grant-funded as well. So all these are through grants.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Oh, well.
My report. So June 9th through the 27th, pardon me, July 9th through the 27th was our extended school year services. We had 35 students that attended. Of those 35 students, our biggest populations were in second grade and preschool. And pretty pleased with attendance overall. We had a few we had to try to chase in, but overall attendance was quite good. We've done, gone through our round of training for crisis prevention intervention. Because of the requirements for restraint and seclusion, we're required to train populations in both buildings regarding this. We do a lot of de-escalation conversation, mostly because all crisis begins in anxiety and depending on what happens during anxiety, then we get to the next stage, which is kind of being defensive and kids talking back and refusing, or any adult. I mean, I talk about this when I do the training about it, even in your personal life, we all, you know, we all have a point where people are, you know, operating out of anxiety and how we respond to that, you know, indicates whether or not we're going to get to the next refusal, whether it's to bring the trash out or to bring the car to get repaired or, you know, whatever that might be. So we talk about it that way. We also do a lot with empathic listening because that's the part that really kind of helps de-escalate anxiety and it can be, if you feel like, and I know I feel like this, I get accused often, at least at home, of not listening or at least not paying my full attention while listening. And so we talk about the strategies to use to do that, to, you know, kind of put everything aside and, you know, looking at the individual. Sounds like really basic stuff, but, you know, things we sometimes forget when we're in a moment of, you know, trying to talk a kid down. So empathic listening and it shows you some of the steps that we're working with there. We also do combine it with videos and a little drier video, which is kind of the CPI piece where we're talking about some kind of explicit instruction pieces because there is a test at the end of it. But we also do try to do some nice kind of videos that just kind of help set the mood. And every opportunity, if you get a chance to look at it, I think it was used in a couple of buildings this year, is just really nice way of looking at and seeing how adults, adults interacting with adults and adults interacting with kids really sets the culture for what a school building is like. So that's kind of how we opened up the conversation. And so it was, you know, how it contributes to anybody having a good or a bad day is how we react to a student in a certain situation. We're still working to improve our supports for students with behavioral challenges. Megan Henry has joined us as a case manager, special education teacher for students on autism spectrum or students that present with disabilities that are with characteristics of that disability. We're thrilled to have her. Already have seen kind of a change in the culture there in terms of, you know, the students having a location they can go to to decompress, a location they can go to to access supports and do specialized instruction that is geared more toward them. And that's been really thrilled, been really thrilled to see that. She also has a background, having done some work as a board, to become certified as a board certified behavior analyst, and I think she's either done or very close.
I think November or December she'll be finished.
Yeah, so it's nice to have that there in terms of a background for behavior, so we're thrilled to be able to take advantage of that. I give you some information in terms of court-involved cases. We're joined on five delinquencies. We have five abuse cases pending and there are a couple of cases that are pending as well. Student assistance program continues. We did it over the summer. Ashley Sheedy, who's a member of Live Free Recovery, was part of the Fernald Park presentation that went on August 31st. We enjoy our work with them and we're thrilled to have them with us again this year. I believe we had, I think, 45 to 47 students involved in the program last year and I anticipate we'll have at least that many going into the next year. Thank you to the guidance counselors and also administration. Donna Ellis, Sarah Gould, Katie Sauer, and Linda Scheff, have been working very diligently, calling parents. I know the school year just started, but we already have students who have not made it in the door, so they've been making those phone calls. We've been making the phone calls to DCYF and sending out our school resource officer to do wellness checks to make sure everybody's where they're supposed to be. Any questions I can answer for you?
What's that?
If I could just add to that last point. I think it's extremely important that we recognize the folks who take that extra step for the welfare of the children in our community, because there was, there was an analysis that was done, I think of 2017 data for DCYF calls and the number of cases that ended up being classified as true abuse cases to some of the legislators in our state seemed really low. And so there was actually a bill proposed that stated, "Let's stop even looking for educational neglect," because so few turn out to really be, and it breaks your heart if you read the language in that bill. That was actually raised, that it's part of our state's history, it's part of our, anyhow, it died in committee, thank goodness. However, I just wanted to bring up that, the folks that do that extra step, that take and follow what's expected of them, but take it very seriously, that if a child isn't coming to school, something's up, they have to be checked on. It could just be that they're being homeschooled and just not registered as a homeschool student and that's fine and we can work on that. But, and that can be, you know, and get the resources to the family to be able to effectively homeschool them. But to say, "Let's stop even checking because we don't have the resources to support all of those kind of calls," it's not the solution that I think most people in this state would support. So I just wanted to say thank you to yourself, RSRO. I know there's a lot to do with that.
He does, he does.
The team that does that part, thank you very much. Because even if we reach one child and get support to one child, it's worth it.
It is, absolutely, absolutely. Thank you for saying that.
Thank you.
Any other new business? Okay, old business. We have a second read for the staff ethics policy, GBEA.
We've not heard anything back that I know of from the School Board Association.
No.
Okay, so.
Can I table?
We certainly can.
Motion by Mrs. Moore into table, second by Ms. McElhenney. All is in favor?
Aye. Okay, that was quick.
Athletic gate receipts.
So I have included in your packet a memo regarding the gate receipts. We have a few options available to us and those options have been back and forth. The first option is to have all gate revenues and participation fees go to the general fund. This is the least easily accessed option. It's not been favored in the past. To have all gate.
Can I, can I, can I just, we've done this in the past, but then we don't access it because we?
Right, and so it's not, if those revenues go into the general fund, it's not that they can't be spent, but it's not an easily accessed and it's a, they can be funneled toward athletics, but it's. toward athletics, but it's the accounting in and out, the whole purpose of having established the enterprise fund to start with was to provide long-term accessibility and also short-term access for those more immediate expenses that come up, say, on game day. Doing it that way doesn't allow for either of those. Because long-term, anything that goes into the general fund, if it's not expensed that year, is turned back. If participation and fees go, or revenues and fees go to athletic boosters, the school doesn't have intervention there. It allows for flexibility in use, but district loses oversight of the funds. If we develop a student activities account for athletics, the gate receipts and participation fees could be deposited there. District retains oversight of funds, but the use is much more restricted in the scope of an activity fund. It wouldn't be something that, it has to go specifically for student use. So buying sheets of plywood for the lights on the field for homecoming would not be allowed out of a student activity fund. And then to write a warrant for the March vote requesting a formal establishment of a revolving enterprise fund for athletics, and having that be for the current school year. So my recommendation would be kind of a combination of two through four. The football gate receipts, we have three home games. The big issue right now is being able to pay for the lights for homecoming night. If the gate receipts for the football, the three football home games were to go to the boosters, the boosters could then pay for the lights, and it would be encapsulated there. I cannot pay for the lights out of an activity fund. So that would allow that, those funds to take care of that purpose without it coming through general fund. I would like to open a student activities account. We have participation fees coming in from newt for the football players who are on the team. And then any gate receipts for fall and spring sports could also be deposited there. Those, they would be used for the athletic program in general, not necessarily targeted for this sport or that sport. Unless we open a separate activities account for each sport, which is not an impossibility, it's just a little bit more accounting.
But you always have had that, I thought.
We've had, but the gate receipts haven't gone there. It's been for fundraising, but it hasn't been for gate receipts. Because the gate receipts have typically been used for broader use. And if they go into a student activities fund, it limits what we can use it for. So then, looking at that enterprise fund for down the road, so that we would have opportunities to use them for broader access.
Blessings going around.
With the immediate need of being able to take care of something on game day, looking at the possibility of doing a bank card that would be, have maybe $200 loaded on it for a season, which could be used for those last-minute, bring the receipts back to the business office, so that there's the accountability there. But there's also the access without somebody having to pay out of pocket and be reimbursed for something that comes up at the last minute. Because those things do come up, particularly on game day. And I'm not looking to hamstring the athletic director. But wanting to make sure that we have the accounting for the gate receipts transparent, and that it's done through channels that are allowable through DRA and that makes sense. So, again, this is a suggestion, and it's certainly open for discussion, and how you would best like to do that. And probably separate motions, depending upon what you decide.
If I may, when the women's club makes their annual donation at the women's tee to the schools, where does that go?
It is made to the principal's funds.
Okay. So what's the parameters with principal's funds?
Principal's funds are spent for school and student benefit. So there's a little bit more latitude there.
Why would there be more latitude? That, to me, is still another student activity fund. We just call it the principal's fund. It used to be called the principal's slash fund, whatever you want to call it.
We don't use the word slash, yeah.
Well, that's, it was used years ago. I don't understand why that fund's different from, from an athletic director fund, or an athletics fund. I don't understand that. To me, it's like, it's almost the same thing.
Can we look into that? The, an athletic director's fund? I mean, we have a principal's fund.
It can't be used for supplies as such. We have, I don't have the, the Reader's Digest version doesn't have necessarily all of the, here's what it can be used for.
But the principal's fund has to follow the exact same rules as all other student activity funds. It's not different from any other student activity fund, correct? It's just mainly the sub-fun, or the sub-account number designates the exact purpose, but the rules and guidelines are the same.
Correct.
They all fall under each school building's student activity fund.
But the principal can buy supplies with them?
If they are supplies primarily for student use, yes.
Right.
So.
I mean, that's all, when I brought this up a few years ago, this enterprise thing went in a completely different direction from what I was suggesting. And I suggested it based on what I know other school districts do. And it was suggested that all those school districts were wrong. Well, someone has to prove that to me. Like, I can't imagine that that many school districts are doing things in such an illegal or unorthodox way.
No, it was more-
Different purposes.
Because the purpose was raised of wanting to be able to potentially provide for some of those larger infrastructure purposes, like a-
That was raised by the business administrator.
Okay. And so if, so I guess I'm bringing this back to the board and saying, if that purpose is being taken off the table by this board, fine. Which, which direction would you like to go?
Well, let me ask, let me pose this to the board. Several schools out there now don't charge for athletics.
Don't charge.
Don't charge admission fees. And we only do it for certain sports. We do it for football and basketball. So why do we have to at all?
We don't have to.
You know?
We don't have to until it's tournament time, then NHIA-
Correct.
Charges and-
And that money goes to NHIA staff and back to the kid over there, but.
What do they currently use the-
You have to think about it.
The gate receipts for, I mean, right now?
Right now, it all goes to the general fund.
The general fund.
Yeah.
But-
To offset all other costs.
But if you want things like bleachers and long-term improvement, you have to have some way to-
Well, and that could be, that could be-
We do have some real needs coming up.
Capital reserve fund, that could be, that could be done through other. We don't have so much coming in in gate receipts that it's going to make a huge impact, without it being several years down the road.
I'd like to see just the parameters and use detailed. I mean, I'm not sure where one would end and one would begin, or if there's overlap, you know? It would be great to just see that all written out. And, I mean, I have a lot of questions regarding if we had this become a warrant article. Who would have direct control over that? Would the boosters still be able to access the funds if it's a warrant article? Yeah, I have all these questions.
The enterprise fund would be established as a, you know, we have Fund 10 for the general ledger account. We have Fund 20 for the grants, Fund 40 for, it would become another number fund that would be within our accounting system, but it would not be accessed by outside groups. And it would simply be there to be used. It's, an enterprise fund is created for a very specific use. So.
I think that we should kind of just go out to the public and find out, what do folks want?
Well, what are their choices?
Our, is our objective to have as many students attend as many athletic events as possible? If that's the case, then let's not charge, or let's not charge students.
I've seen students walk in and turn around and leave because of that.
Yeah, unfortunately, yeah. And we have to be fair. But the other thing is, we do have some real needs coming up. For example, we cannot re-sand and refinish the Henry Wilson gym floor yet anymore. We need to start planning now how we're going to fund that replacement. Because I think, I don't know if you've seen any paperwork of what the number that was, I believe the folks that did it the last time said we had eight years. And it would cost eighty to a hundred thousand dollars to do it. So, in terms of why charge, I don't understand why we only charge for two of our, our sports. I see that we have other sports where we get much greater attendance in some of them. I don't understand why we're not charging at those. I just, it's not something that I've really chased down yet. So I think we have to, we need to go out and talk with folks. We can always do, you know, warrant articles for taking the undesignated fund balance and putting some of that money aside each year into the trust funds that we already have established for athletics purposes. Because that is a community gym, not just a school gym.
Right. I just, you know, when you start talking about re-sanding floors, you know, to me, we have an established Buildings and Grounds Trust Fund-
Right.
-that we can write warrant articles to put money into for those types of things. I mean, the athletic gate receipts, I think if I have read it correctly, the last two years, it somewhere is between maybe like three and four thousand dollars.
Right.
A year or total?
A year.
A year. And, and I don't, I still, I still, I still can't figure out, when I was athletic director, and this, so we're going to go back about six years now, seven years, the gate receipts for football went into a student activity account at the high school earmarked football. That money only went back to the football program. If the boys' basketball team did a fundraiser, they would turn that money over to the high school office. That would go into a student activity account earmarked for boys' basketball. So I don't understand why we can't do that. That just seems easy to me.
Nobody's saying that we can't.
She's looking for our guidance, to tell her what to do.
But why, why did we stop doing it? Like, when did that stop? I mean, for example, last year, there were some fundraises going on.
I think, and, and this is not hard and fast, as I have looked through, digging through some of our financial history over the past several years, I think at one point our activity accounts were being scrutinized, and there was some caution about, hey, make sure you know exactly where things are going. I don't think it means that there were improprieties. I think it was just a, hey, let's review this. And in that process said, well, but if we ever wanted to do this, you can't do that from here. And the conversation started. And I think it went in a direction that I'm not hearing right now is necessarily where we need to go with an enterprise fund. But I think that's where it was, well, can we take all the student activity funds and put it toward? No, you can't, because it's earmarked now for student activity funds. So just wanting to be clear that if you're looking at building something up over time, the student activity fund isn't the place to do it if you want to earmark it here. If you're going to use another means to do those big-ticket items, then we can still do the student activity funds, and that's fine. So, I mean, it doesn't mean we can't. I just want to make sure that I'm going in the direction that the board is looking for us to go. I need to let the athletic director know what we're going to be doing with an upcoming home game.
Um.
And make that clear, because we also have lights that need to be done for homecoming.
I understand that. And last year, lights were provided, my understanding is from the football boosters. And they went out and charged the gate last year. So.
My understanding is that they're not as prepared to do that without some of the gate receipts to offset this year. I have not spoken to them directly. That's my understanding is coming through, Cheryl.
So what's, what's the consequence, oh, sorry, if we don't let them have the gate receipts for it? I mean, are we just going to have to purchase the lights independently for those three home games?
No, no.
It would only be for the one, just for homecoming.
Oh, right.
Just for the one home game.
I thought you said we had three home games.
We have three home games, but only one of those is a night game.
Okay. So.
It's renting the lights for the one night.
But, but let's keep in mind, folks, it's a night game because that organization requested it to be, because they were going to pay for it. Prior to that, those were day games.
Correct.
You only have night games when you have lights. And so they're, they're scheduled to be a day game, changed to a night game, because an organization was going to provide lights for it. So my argument is, if you don't charge someone two or three dollars to get into a game, they're going to then spend that at the concession stand anyway. And they are. Someone has a couple more dollars in their pocket, they're going to buy a fifty-fifty? Well, excuse me, are they going to spend that in the concession? I'd rather see us not charge anything for a year and see how it goes, see how attendance is.
I just have a question. It's kind of more of an overview, but I'd like to know what the funds have been spent on in the past. See if maybe there's a pattern. And see if maybe going forward, we can offset some of those funds using some of our other resources. I mean, it might give us a better idea of what we're looking at.
I mean, any gate receipts have gone back to the general fund to offset the, with the exception of when we had the enterprise fund that wasn't, wasn't done through a warrant article, those funds had to be returned to the town.
Yep. So they went back to the general fund.
So that's what happens.
Undesignated fund balance.
Yeah. Or if we're going to charge for one spot, we should reduce the price and charge for all of them. Just another-
If you, if you vote to allow an outside organization to run, run the gate, you then are not in control of what is charged, either.
Hmm.
I'm going to make a motion, I don't usually do this, but I'm going to make a motion that for the 2018-19 school year, that all athletic events are free for people to attend.
A second.
Second, Mrs. Cardinal, discussion?
Do we want to put in something to the extent that it's in order to review? Maybe we're taking a step back and not charging because we want to see the impact.
Well, that's exactly, I stated that earlier. I didn't state it in my motion.
Yeah.
That's exactly what I want to see.
Right.
What happens to attendance?
Right.
I know what I see in the winter.
Yeah.
You know? Now, again, special tournaments and things like that, you're probably going to have to, because referee costs and things like that, trophies are going to have to be paid for by an outside agency. So.
How do we measure attendance now? And how will we measure attendance this school year?
Because we didn't measure it before.
We certainly don't.
Well?
Just talk with the coaching staff of each program and-
I mean, you could certainly just kind of do a, what's the halftime nose count?
I believe there's a record, though. I believe that in the past, Mrs. Funk has kept record in some fashion for winter.
For basketball, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have, I mean, when we've charged admission, you certainly have the receipts coming in divided by the admission cost. It's a little bit easier to guesstimate what your, what your numbers are.
Any other discussion?
But we can go the old-fashioned route and count noses.
Mm-hmm.
What's that? Your vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Someone will let the football staff know?
I will, I will. And so, anything moving forward as far as, okay, so I do have one other issue that we still need to take care of then, is that the participation fees from newt do need to be put somewhere. And right now, I don't have a place designated for those.
So general fund, right.
And so, general fund or athletics, student activity fund?
I'm hesitant to put them in the general fund.
I think general fund, because the cost of running the football program comes out of our general fund.
And certainly any, any refurbishment of football gear would be done during the offseason, so that could be expensed this year.
But you can still use it out of the general fund.
That's my understanding.
Yeah.
And you've, you've-
If you can't, then we-
Yeah, and you have already voted to accept those funds.
Right.
Right.
So.
Uh, UNH T R R E program, why is that acronym not making sense to me? It's the T R R E program.
It is the, it came up before. It's the Teacher Residency for Rural Education.
Yes.
You had asked me to take that back to the association, which I did do. And at- And at this point, there's been no question come up or hesitancy with that. They would like to be able to have an MOU from both Henry Wilson and Valley View are the two schools right now that are targeted. It also, part of being part of this program also involves our free and reduced lunch numbers to make us available.
Who wants an MOU, UNH?
UNH does, in order to participate with the program and have our school listed as one of the schools where teachers could potentially be assigned for their training.
Does, oh, so we'd move to accept the program?
Basically, I was just asking that, you know, to make sure, I can sign the MOU, but just to make sure that the board is, is good with our participation. That's all.
I think we...
I move to have Farmington School District enroll in the T R R E, Teacher Rural Residency Education Program?
Teacher residency for rural education.
Any questions with UNH? Second, motion by Mrs. Cardinal, second by Mrs. Moore. Discussion?
Does UNH have a sample MOU that they use?
Pretty much, they've, they've written it for me and just said, "Please sign here."
And that was included in last meeting's packet, right?
It was, yeah.
Any other discussion? Yeah.
Very exciting.
All those in favor? Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
All right, any other old business?
I'll just say that I'm attending the school board workshop on Thursday on SB 2 and default budgeting as well. I know we mentioned...
With Mrs. Cardinal. Are you going with that?
I went last Thursday.
Oh, that's right, you went to one.
And Mr. Geisberg is going as well.
Oh, good.
Excellent, let's carpool.
Okay, any other old business from the board or...
Just a request for next agenda, a update for the school board's representative to the Budget Committee. Just so that this board is fully aware of all of the presentations that are going to be happening at Budget Committee meetings and so on. I requested with the chairperson of the Budget Committee for certain topics to be listed on the agenda at a nice pace so that it's not just all of these questions are piling up, piling up, and we can really give a broad overview based on topics. So the September topics will be the budget calendar. And the, so what we've, what we're proposing to the Budget Committee can then be reviewed and either adopted or amended and adopted by the Budget Committee. And the second is bidding process with any pre-purchase of inventories.
Do we need this, please? Is that the only thing?
Yep, that's the only thing I had on there. I do need the, I need the nomination and resignation.
Yeah, yep, it's fine. There's one other thing. Oh, to your knowledge, I probably should have asked Mrs. Gardner this, but I didn't think of it at the time. Has there been a process to select a new student representative this year since Mr. Zawiki?
I believe there was a vote that took place at the end of last school year.
Okay, okay. So if we could just kind of look into that and see when they're going to get that going?
Yep, because I have a name. I have a name, but I want to make sure that it's solidified before I announce.
Yeah, that's fine, oh, sure, yeah. Okay. What? I'm going to, yeah. Any public participation? The Health and Wellness Committee has asked me to announce that Friends of Farmington on 480 Main Street from Tuesdays from September 25th to November 6th, looks like there's six sessions, are going to be doing a Slow Cooker Meals Made Easy. Well, I needed this about 15, 20 years ago. Bachelors love slow cookers. And each week, I guess it's in cooperation with UNH Cooperative Extension, they're going to cover slow cooker meals, how to read food labels, whole grains, fruits and veggies, family exercise ideas, how to use a slow cooker safely, feeding picky eater kids and testing your soft drink knowledge. So that's going to be 5:30 to 7:00 on Tuesdays from September 25th to November 6th. Now, the only thing that I don't have on here is, how do they get, it says to fill this form out and get it back to...
I believe they're going to be in all the schools.
They're going to be going out to all the schools? Okay.
And I, I haven't seen it come to me for approval, but I will approve it. And it's something that we can probably post so that people can download it.
Well, they're being sampling.
And it is, it is limited to five to six families.
Oh.
So get in early.
And typically, they, they make a meal and then they take pieces home to make the meal at home, so...
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good idea like that.
We've run similar programs through FAMI as well and hope to do so again later in the fall, so, and later in the winter. So there may be an opportunity to repeat later on, too. But do this one if you can.
Yeah, thank you. All right, our next meeting is actually next Monday, September 17th. We doubled up because of the Labor Day holiday. So September 17th, right here at 6:30 PM. Thank you to those of you who joined us from home and thank you, Ms. Vachon, for coming out this evening. We will not need a non-public session for personnel. So I entertain a motion to go into non-public session two for nominations and resignations under RSA 91A colon 32A, B and C. So a move by Mr. Frida?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Cardinal. All those in favor, by roll? Aye. Good night, folks.